Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 6 o'clock PM. We did not, obviously, have a committee of the whole meeting yesterday in observance of Labor Day. So we appreciate all of you attending. We also have some friends here from the scout troop that meets at Palm Norton. It looks like it's mostly Weeblo scouts, but we really appreciate you all. Give us a nice wave. We got to meet for about a half hour, learn about city government and some of the cool technology we use. So thank you all for being here. We appreciate you. And we're looking at the last week of our fire chief, Chief Knorick. So hopefully you got a piece of cake. I was otherwise detained, sir. So we're working on your last bit of time. Thank you so much for the great work you've done on behalf of the city. And we couldn't be happier for you in your retirement. So God bless you and thank you. All right, we begin our meeting tonight with a presentation. This is an update on the proposed fee adjustments for sewer connections, fire alarm plan reviews, and mechanical and electrical upgrades and permits. This is from our community development department. Mark, Jeremy, thanks for being here. You have the floor. That's my coffee. I'm just going to walk up and grab it. So you guys get going.
Okay, thanks, Your Honor.
No, I got it, Jeremy.
Thanks, Your Honor. We would be happy to provide service, but no worries. We do have some proposed fee updates. Now, these really go back to our budget session this last year. On February 10th, I did send council a memo, just a quick two pager outlining some possible fee increases that I think would be aligned with our goals as a city to provide service and also still stay a very reasonable and efficient city as far as the fees that we do charge. I'm presenting these as behalf of community development because we intake all these fees, but they're not necessarily all community development fees. So there are other departments involved. I welcome any other department head to weigh in, provide clarification at any time in case I misrepresent something. I did mention the 2324 budget meetings that we had. I did provide a brief memo then that was really more of an outline. This is to put some meat on the bone, show you kind of what these fees would look like in paper before we go through the red line process and bring you actually updated code. areas of increase will be rental license, sewer connection, floodplain review, fire alarm review, temporary electrical, temporary heat, planning and zoning, and board of adjustment fees. I'll go through each of those individually. I'll be happy to answer questions at the end. On rental license, currently we charge $35 with $10 each additional unit. We would propose that we go up to $50 for that first unit and then $10 each additional unit after that. So you'd be looking at a duplex coming in at about $60, fourplex at $80, and a 24-unit building, to show you how it would scale up, would be about $280. And that's kind of per building. So if you had multiple 24-unit buildings on one site, think about Chateau Nol, each one of those 24-unit buildings would come in at about $280, $300 bucks. Finding comparables is an art, not a science. There are a million ways that cities, a million different ways that cities do this across our state and in the Quad Cities as a whole. I threw some on the page at you. You could probably find five more cities and have five different ways to do this. We kind of have the base that we've established, so I'm going from there. Some cities do it all on inspections, and you're always, you know, charging a fee for inspections. I personally don't like that. I like inspections to be a time for collaboration between the city and the landlord, where we find some things that maybe they didn't know about. We try to get them passed, try to get them off to a good status. So I don't really like inspections to be punitive. I'd rather just get that cost charged upfront. Davenport charges between $30 and $60 per license. It kind of depends on the license. And a lot of these are based off websites, so there may be details I'm missing here. I'm not claiming to be an expert on any other city's fee structure. Moline does it on a per-unit basis, again, at the inspection level. Dubuque does $25 for the structure. Then everything in that structure is an additional $30 bucks unless it's just a rooming unit where you don't have cooking facilities or a bathroom, you just have a room, then it's $15. We don't have really a lot of that occurrence in Bettendorf, so I don't think that division is necessary, the rooming unit versus dwelling unit. So again, we're proposing going up $15 from 35 to 15 and then keeping that $10 each additional unit. We'll move on to sanitary sewer connection fees.
Again, these fees help offset the work that our folks are doing to go out and inspect. Clearly, you can't do an inspection for 50 bucks.
No, again, and maybe to backpedal a little, backstop just a little bit. You know, the concept of taxes and fees is taxes are the things that are serving all citizens kind of equally. And then fees are the things that are charged directly to a citizen or a company for direct services they are receiving from the city that's not broadly provided to the citizens as a whole. So that's where the fee kind of fills that gap, if you will.
Your Honor, can I ask a question? If we backed up, or can I ask questions as we go?
Yeah, go ahead. Mark's fine.
Okay, if we back up to that first green mark, okay, like Davenport, where is it? $30 to $60 a license, so that's on a building. Okay, so if we're doing 35 on the first unit, $10 each additional unit. So are they doing 30 to 60 on a building?
Yeah, so Davenport's fee structure is really built into the, they have a license, but then they also have a fee structure based on points for how well you do at inspection time. So where they're hammering you is at the inspection time. I don't like that model. I look for the inspection to be collaborative. I don't like to show up and go, "We found a bunch of stuff wrong, and now you're getting a bill." So again, there are 100 different ways to do this. I don't know that those comparisons can ever really be made one-to-one. So, for example, if you're found without a license in Davenport, it's $500 off the bat. We're not going that route. We're asking you to comply. We're asking you to pay your license and get current, but we're not fining you another $500 on top of that.
Okay, I just, my thought is the $10 additional units seem cheap, or why wouldn't we make it consistent with the first unit?
Yeah, and again, trying to do those one-to-one parallels, their fee structure is so different. It's highly punitive on the inspection side, highly punitive on if you don't have a license and we catch you. I think we have a better relationship than that, and I don't really want to go down that road. Your Honor, there's others I just, go ahead.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We're committee of the whole. If there's a discussion topic, go ahead. It's a little less formal then.
Yes, sir. So if I'm reading this right, it's $10 additional unit before, it's $10 additional unit, your proposal. So for a 24-unit building, it's 15 more dollars.
Well, so you go, you paid 35 bucks originally for that.
Now you're paying 50, so that's 15 more dollars. So for a 24-unit building, it's 15 more dollars.
That would be correct.
Okay, I think that's super reasonable.
I believe we are more than reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
I think we've added a lot of value for our landlords.
Do these fees apply to Airbnb also?
They do not. They're not allowed to. The state preempts us from acting in that area.
Go ahead, you're fine.
Thanks, Your Honor. Good discussion again. Also, just to back up, these are just what we're proposing based off what we talked about at budget discussion. None of this is in writing yet. I don't want to do a bunch of code updates and bring you a bunch of red lines if this isn't the direction you want to go. So we're responding to what we think you want, but we are very easy to make changes, happy to do those or provide further discussion if you'd like. I might lean on Jeremy, maybe our engineering department a little bit for this one. Sanitary sewer connection fees has been a hot topic, especially in a fast-growth city like Bettendorf. The current fee is $110 per bedroom for single-family homes. And then you can kind of read down the list for yourself, but I really want to talk about the $110 per bedroom for single-family homes. That's the one where I think we're probably needing to raise our rates a little bit. Definitely came out of the budget discussion hearing that. So we propose to go up to 150 on the bed, per bedroom for the single-family homes. Then everything else kind of creeps up a little bit, 75 at the hotel. Commercial buildings up to 75 per thousand square feet. Restaurants, we do $20 for a seat or occupant load. We'd go up to 25 from 20, and then 150 on the industrial buildings. Again, just like with, you're going to hear the same story, just like with the rental inspections, there's 1,000 ways to do this. If you went to 1,000 cities, you might find 1,000 different ways because these things are so entrenched and baked into other processes they might have. Davenport's at $100, Elders is at 200. Waukees and West Des Moines are quite a bit higher. Coming in just at the base at 600 in Waukees and 44 for West Des Moines, and they kind of go up from there. I think 110 is way too reasonable. I think 150 is something I heard when we were at that budget meeting previously, and I think it'd be palatable to our developers as well.
Well, I think just to lay the groundwork, you know, during that budget meeting, we haven't touched these fees in decades.
Correct.
And we continue to see the growth, and we know that it costs way more than what we're able to glean from any of these fees. And when you compare us with Waukees and West Des Moines, who are comparable cities in terms of growth, they've kind of figured out that they've got to offset some of that extraordinary cost for those hookups in a different way. So I think it's being awfully reasonable in your suggestions, which I appreciate because there's the backside of making sure it's palatable to those who are building, and we don't raise it so fast, so hard that it creates hardship on them.
Yeah, agreed. We certainly appreciate developers in Bettendorf. We work with them on a daily basis. We certainly don't want to dissuade development, but we also want to make sure we're capturing that reasonable price and not taking from the taxpayer that's not necessarily part of that project, if you will, or benefiting from that direct project. Floodplain review fees, this one we were doing no fee at all, so this will be a new fee. Very few of the fees I'm going to talk about tonight are new fees. We're not trying to add a nickel and dime here, but we were doing nothing in the floodplain area. We need to get better at that. We are, and Taylor is a certified floodplain manager, Taylor Beswick. He's received the training, passed the required test, and we're looking to do more on our floodplain management as a city. And having that $35 flat fee for doing the reviews, which take at a minimum an hour of Taylor's time, is just more than reasonable, and we're having more and more of it. Just managing floodplain has gotten more and more complex. If you've ever worked with FEMA, they are not simple. They will make you crazy. And he's doing a good job at that. I think this flat fee will help us offset some of our costs and maybe do a little more on getting our CRS application completed as a community rating system, which if we do receive that status, can lower rates for all taxpayers that have property in the floodplain, including the city. So something we're working toward.
We've talked about that a lot. I know you're working on it.
Fire alarm review fees, this one was a $10 flat fee. And just Jeremy jumped into, but a fire alarm review fee is a process that requires someone from the fire department, probably the chief or the assistant chief, to go through and look at the fire alarm system through a whole building. And that could be computers and sensors, and make sure it works, make sure it's right, make sure it's meeting all the codes. And these systems have only gotten more and more complex, as you can imagine, with technology and time. $10 is not even near an hour of the fire marshal's time or the chief's time. We would propose to move this to a job cost-based fee. And we have a chart that's been adopted by the city of job costs and what the associated fee is. It's not a flat percentage per se, it's like a percentage, if you will. It kind of escalates as the project goes up. A $3,000 alarm system right now, if you did it on our adopted chart, would cost about a $60 review fee instead of 10. And I don't know as $3,000 what most alarm systems cost, or it just depends on the building.
It can range from anything.
Yeah.
When you're talking about hotels and stuff, it's going to be a lot more, but it'll be consistent with the fire sprinkler plan review.
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it.
They kind of go hand-in-hand with each other. That's how we already charge the fire sprinkler review. So we're just looking to apples-to-apples with the alarm system.
Again, Scott County and Davenport is kind of baked into some other costs they already charge. In Grimes, they charge $150 for up to 30 devices, 30 sensors, I'm thinking. And they go up to another $30 per device. I'll do both of these, temp heat and temp electrical at once. They're really the same thing. These are things you're probably not familiar with, but they spend a lot of time of our inspectors in the field, running out and checking on temporary heat and temporary electrical. So that's the heat or electrical service that's hooked up while a building's under construction. It's not for the homeowner, it's for the benefit of the builder or his employees or her employees while they're working in elements. And so we're about to go into that season. It usually starts in November. We weren't charging but $16, $15 for these. I don't think we even charged for temp heat, which didn't make any sense. Why would you charge for electrical and not charge for heat? It's a full inspection, though, so if you're going to hook up electricity or heat, no matter whether it's temporary or not, you still have to be inspected. It still has to meet all the building codes. And if it's not right, we've got to come out there and inspect it again. So we spend a lot of time going back and forth for the benefit of the builder, if you will, not even the eventual homeowner. $35 for all building types, we think is more than fair. And that would cover both temp heat and temp electrical. And last but not least, planning and zoning and board of adjustment application fees, some very modest increases here. I will tell you, we are significantly less than many cities, even ones here locally. So you can see the current fees, they range from $50 to $100, maybe $25 to $100 for all kinds of our plaits, site plans, things that you're used to seeing all the time. I think you know how much work those things take in neighborhood meetings and mailings and notifications and the signs. Modest increases to $125 basically for everything down the board. So if you're coming in for rezoning, land use, site plan, preliminary plat, final plat, you're coming in at $125. And then we've got some little add-ons. The one I would draw your attention to is notification fees. That is where we have grown and provide more service as a city than we ever provided before. Think about the ways we communicate now. So when we have to do a notice for rezoning, we have the sign. We provide the sign, we print the signs, we provide the signs. We have the posting in the newspaper that we do. We have the texts that we send out to those that have signed up for our text alert system. We have the Facebook page that we update. We have the website that we update. We do neighborhood letters, perhaps a neighborhood meeting. So that notification fee of $100 is getting you a lot of service, and it's consistent and less than most people are charging. So you have the $125 for your 10 acres or less, $250 for 10 acres or more, and then a flat fee for the notifications at $100.
Mark, is that 100 notification fee, is that covering the signs, materials, the labor?
Probably not 100%, no. If it were, it'd be $500 or $600 probably. But again, I think what we try to do is provide a lot of value for relatively low cost. And I believe that nothing I'm presenting here is going to, you know, make or break a project for sure and would be more than palatable for most of our developers that we work with on a daily basis. And they know, you know, we've added these things, just since Angie's come on board, we've added the text notifications. So if you live in a part of town and there's a development coming, you get a text message on your phone. Pretty great. So I think there's value there, and we're just asking for the developer to help cover the cost of that value. I won't read through all the fees, but I do want to show you the comparables because I think they're interesting. Davenport, you throw in there just because they're our next-door neighbor. They're coming in at 250, 200 to 250 for everything, 500. And their advertising cost is a flat 500, I believe. Don't quote me on that, it's hard to tell from the website I was looking, but they build in that advertising cost as a plus. So you pay the application fee, then you pay the advertising cost. I like doing a flat fee because I don't want to sit there and go, "Oh, we sent 200 letters, and each letter was 55 cents, and the paper was, you know, 10 cents." I don't want to do that. I just don't want to make it easy for everybody, just do a flat fee. Des Moines, West Des Moines, kind of the middle of the road, maybe? Around 100 bucks for your most basic appeal to the BOA, up to 350 plus extra dollars. And they use $11 as their plus amount, not 10, for, you know, additional acreage or additional sites. And then you have Grimes, which is the highest I could find, with the rezoning at $2,000 coming in the door. Maybe they don't charge other fees, that's why that's so high, I don't know. We're definitely still on the low end, if not the lowest, for any major city in Iowa with these updates. I think that gets me to the end. I'm happy to answer questions or provide more detail.
Any more questions? I know we kind of tasked you with this, and then you sent us a memo, January, February timeframe, kind of outlaying this. Probably had lots of time. Mr. Ryder, would you like to join the conversation?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just really quickly, Mark was touching on the advertising fees. I think it's important to note as well, and I think Michelle could attest to this, a lot of this is the notice, the public notices in the newspaper as well. So some of it is statutorily required. So advertising sometimes can be a little bit of a misnomer, if you will. There's a lot of things that we're required to do by code, and one of those big expenses is the public notification in the newspaper that we're required to do.
Other questions? If you have other thoughts, if you want to create a conversation about some of the amounts, if you've got an area of expertise, you'd like to say, "Hey, this is what I think this should be." Talk to Mark, please, and he'll get with Jeremy and the group. Otherwise, we look forward to you bringing it to our attention for approval.
I would like to bring a red line next time, if that's okay, Your Honor.
Absolutely. We'd like that. Let's go to case 23053. I know you got it queued up.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. Jeremy, if you need to head out, you're welcome to.
Thanks, Jeremy. Have a great night.
So 23053, Hope Heights Edition, this is a preliminary plat. It's going to be very familiar to you. I'll get to the graphics here in just a second. This is off of Criswell and Hopewell Avenue. You will probably remember, almost a year ago, you had the rezoning for this that came through to R3. The applicant is Yelsey Investments of Iowa. It's going to be plotted into 48 lots of mixed residential use. Here's the future land use map. Good thing is, and it better because we just did the rezoning a year ago, the future land use map does allow R3, and we zoned it to R3. And that's a good thing, because if it didn't, that'd be a problem. But just to remind you, that future land use map has UMI and ULI. Those underlying zones do allow the R3 mixed residential district. Here's how that zoning looks in map form, September of 2022, so really just about a year ago. We did approve a rezoning through this council. And this is all single-family, duplex, and townhouses, and those are all permitted in R3. This was a conditional rezoning, so here's what the concept looked like. We did diverge from the concept a little bit, but we diverged to the benefit, if you will, of the city, so the divergence is something we wanted. So I would say this is consistent with the original concept, if not better. And we do appreciate the developer for working, for working with us on that. So townhouses were originally shown here along Criswell and mostly fourplexes and duplexes kind of in the center. They've changed that. They've added some more single-family homes, taken out some of the fourplexes and duplexes. So a net less dense, if you will, and I think that's a good thing. Greg, put this slide together. This is a great graphic. I will do a juxtaposition here for you in just a second. But you're now getting large, single-family homes. Don't let these building footprints fool you. These are large, single-family homes. They just dropped in some, they look like duplexes or something, but it was just to show what the overall building outline would look like. But these are to be large, single-family homes. Here's the net change. You increased the duplexes by two units. You decreased the fourplexes by 12 units and increased single-family by two units. So less density, more single-family. I think that's something this council would appreciate. We do have the five-foot-wide sidewalks. We have stormwater detention down here. We have right-of-way throughout in this U shape, also to the, running to the north and south on these two roads as well. We do recommend approving the preliminary plat. It is supported by the ordinance and also our comprehensive plan goal D and goal G. And it does have a few of our basic criteria. They do have to have site plans for anything of more, anything of more than three units. And only one driveway per unit. We want to save that snow storage area, so we don't want a bunch of driveways in the right-of-way. We did have unanimous support at the August 16th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mark? Frank?
I'm assuming those are city streets.
Yeah, right-of-way city streets. Yes, Frank, those would be all right-of-way city streets here.
Okay, is there enough snow storage?
I think there is. That's why we did the one driveway, so we don't have a bunch of U-shaped driveways taking up snow storage. Mr. Schmidt's here, he can talk about that. But it's this, especially going to the single families here. Instead of having the townhouses, you get a lot more snow storage along those. So that helps a lot. Taking that density down has increased that snow storage compared to what you had here when you'd had to have a bunch of driveways.
That looks pretty tight.
Yeah, so I think you're going to have that.
Thank you. Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Will the sidewalk extend along the streets, along the detention pond?
So typically, we haven't had the sidewalks there. I don't know, that's a fair question. I would have to go back and look. Let me see if I can zoom in and see it.
Mark, this is Brent. Can I answer that for you?
Yeah, please, Brett. Throw me a lifeline.
Yeah, so that, to Alderman Sexer's question, that has been an issue on a couple of subdivisions over, say, the last 10, 15 years where they got missed because it didn't require a building permit. We've actually started making developers build those with the streets, so that way we ensure they go in. We started that maybe two years ago, so that will not be a problem here.
Yeah, and they're showing it on the preliminary plat. Mr. Sexer here.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? All right, perfect. This is consent J. I'd like to entertain a motion to remain as such for tonight's approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It'll be on consent as item J. Let's move to item K, case 2354.
I think this wins the award for most unique site development plan of the year. I'm kind of excited to present about it.
Dad, Aiden, we're all over it.
It's an adaptive, it's an adaptive reuse of a former oil change building. Here's a little background for you. The address is 277 18th Street. You might remember Degrieve, that was one of the brand names that was there. Degrieve Oil Change was there for a while. The applicant is actually Drive-Thru Estates, and that name makes a lot of sense as you get into the site plan here in a second. It is a drive-thru coffee shop, not a drive-up, but a drive-through, like drive-through-the-building coffee shop. I'll show you a little bit more about that here in a second. But want to touch base on zoning, as we always do as planners. It's C2, Community Commercial. Coffee shops are allowed in C2. The neighboring uses are C2 and C1, so they're similar type users. You won't have a lot of externalities or conflicts between a coffee shop user in these areas because they're all commercial in nature. We have a site development plan that brings in traffic. Basically, just how it used to operate as an oil change shop, it still brings the traffic in, stacks it along the, I'm going to call this, north side of the building. They're giving us a little more room here than we had before, which we're happy to see. And they're going to put a retaining wall in to hold that hillside up. Traffic will come in, line up in front of the bays. You'll pull into the bay. You're not ordering at a window and saying, you know, "I want to..." whatever, whatever. You're actually ordering inside the protected area of this building, taking order and then driving out, exiting, I'm going to say, south toward Cumberland Square, either into Cumberland Square or out, this exit here. They do meet our stacking requirements. In fact, they almost double our stacking requirements. They're going to take out some trees along the boulevard, which honestly, these trees have been, from a code enforcement perspective, a problem because I have some sightline issues with them. So I'm happy to see them go, but they're going to put more trees back, and you're going to get three trees added elsewhere on the site, probably in this area and over here in the corner as well. We have a dumpster location, we have parking. Very minimal parking because this is not a stop-and-go-inside kind of place. You really don't do that unless you work there. The way this will work is you'll have your employees parked, and then if you don't want to be a drive-thru customer, perhaps you're a kid walking to school or walking home from school, they have a walk-up window. And that walk-up window is going to be delineated with striping through the parking lot to kind of get you to it. We're going to ask that they put in some walk path or step down, if you will, from the sidewalk into the building so we don't get the old cow path going through the boulevard. The building will get a new facade, but it'll be the same building on the inside for the most part. The first floor in the basement will be used. The basement's actually used for storage. And they've kind of worked out how they'll protect that for fall and trip and all that kind of thing as well. Staff supports the proposal. It does align with our comprehensive plan. It does meet all of our zoning requirements as well. We do have some very basic kind of standard conditions, and we did have unanimous approval at the August 16th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'd be happy to answer questions, Your Honor.
Bill? Mr. Hunt, can we go back to the site development plan? Has the developer considered, I don't think there's a barrier between the Cumberland Square parking lot showing south of this and their site, have they considered how to stop people from short-circuiting their access point?
We did talk to them about that issue because what I could see somebody trying to do if they really wanted a coffee is they could try and zip in right here and cut in line.
Right.
Because you don't have that order box, you know, so you could cut in line. They are showing, it's not detailed very clearly on a presentation slideshow quality image, but they're going to build up some curb here. Now, granted, that curb doesn't probably get you all the way out of that from happening. Somebody could still try and sneak in if they went around the curb. But it does, it does provide some amount of protection from that happening.
They could perhaps look at maybe extending that curb a little farther to the west.
We could ask them to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Greg, did you have something else?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, so the cars come out. And what is to prevent them from taking the north? I know it's got two arrows going in, but what would prevent them from turning right and going out there?
So really, the only thing that's gonna prevent them from turning right is the queue itself. So if the queue is long enough, they're not gonna be able to do that. If there's nobody there, um, I would suggest no harm, no foul.
Well, that's, okay. Those people are trying to get in while they're trying to get out.
Right, and so if you have that natural queuing happening, you obviously wouldn't be able to go against traffic, because there'd be a car there.
There isn't a car there, though, they-
They, they could definitely do it, and it really would be the same as it, as it is now. People could go left or right. It's not a controlled intersection. It's a right-in, right-out-only type of situation.
Okay, so perhaps a, a curb there too, but whatever. Okay, I guess if it becomes a problem, they can always add that.
Yeah, the internal kind of, you know, besides stacking, the actual internal flow, more up to them.
Oh, sure. I understand.
Totally agree that if, that that became a problem, they would want to put some traffic controls in place.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, most of this site is hard-stand. Where do they plan to, uh, put snow? Where's the snow storage?
It would, it would be the same snow, snow storage that it had before, so they would just have to plow their lot. They would plow up into the, uh, green space here. They also have some green space here. Um, they could plow along this wall a little bit and also towards the back. But again, that's the same as it ever was.
Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, Mark, I'm guessing that they've, you know, it's not the first time they've built a location like this. So did they share anything with you regarding the employee safety as two cars are coming in and-
I think it is the first time.
Oh, it's the first time. All right, well then, that's a great question then. How are they gonna keep their workers safe as they, if you have two cars entering?
Yeah.
Did they share any of that with you?
You know, uh, we are only very remotely related to like internal operations, OSHA, safety type of things. Um, one thing I, I would have concern with is that people understand that you can't be closing garage doors with cars running. Uh, it can be a real CO2-type issue.
Yeah.
That is up to them to figure out. Uh, they, they have talked about some different safety mechanisms they're gonna have in place and, and protocols. I'm not really qualified to review those, but I certainly understand the question and, and, you know, I could offline get you some more information if you liked, if you would like, but I don't have, you know, answers for that operational-type detail for you.
Understood.
Other questions? All right, this is listed as consent K. I'd like to take it up later this evening on our general agenda as consent K.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It'll be on our consent agenda tonight. Let's move to consent L, case twenty-three fifty-five.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. This is the site plan for, um, Quick Star. So we've talked a lot about this. We've had it come through, uh, before in the, in the plating stages. The applicant, Quick Trip, they go by Quick Star in our market. Quick Trip is the national chain. Uh, it's lot one of Legacy Corners. So the one in green, uh, here, if you will. It's a Quick Star gas station, ten gas pumps, twenty vehicle stalls. That was approved through our Board of Adjustment a few months back uh, to allow the larger, uh, vehicle fueling station. Future land use is, uh, neighborhood commercial, and it does allow, uh, this zoning district, which is already there. No rezoning was required. It's currently been zoned C two. It's been zoned C two for quite some time. I think probably twenty, thirty years, actually. I did mention the Board of Adjustment did approve a special use permit, uh, for the ten pumps, twenty vehicles at once. It does also have a car wash. That was also a special use permit that was granted by the Board of Adjustment. Here's what that final plat looks like. Again, we're talking lot one, the northern lot up here. Um, and then lot two is reserved for future development. Not a consideration. There's nothing about lot two that is being approved tonight. I want to emphasize that point. We're only talking about the Quick Star site. Here's the combined site plan. I do apologize. When you scrunch things down for PowerPoint, sometimes they become really hard to read, which is the case here. Um, but I got a couple of the graphics that are gonna make this more clear for you. Um, the combined site plan shows grading, utility connections, uh, dimensions for development. Those all meet our codes, so we reviewed all those with, uh, planners and, and, uh, city engineer. Uh, we do have the access to Middle Road here. That is the only access, uh, that's gonna be provided. I'm sorry. Did I mess that up? Yeah, no, that's correct. Um, here's a more easy-to-read site plan, and I've got the landscape plan that I think will even drive this home further. Here's some things I think you want to know. We're putting, having them put the car wash closest to the traffic, closest to the corner. No car wash near the houses. Um, your fuel island is here. In between the fuel island and the property line, you have a lot of open space. You have a, uh, what I'm gonna call landscaping berm in the site itself, and then you're gonna have another landscaping berm in this area, which really isn't dimensioned or shown on this. Um, here's your stacking for your car wash. Um, your parking for your visitors and your employees all along this area. I'm sorry, near northern entrance here. I missed that on that messy slide beforehand. I'm sorry, your northern entrance is up here as well. Take a second to look at this slide. You're gonna see this buffer here. This is above and beyond what's required by code. Uh, this was negotiated through meetings with the neighborhood, um, and at P and Z to provide an extra buffer between the neighboring homes and the beginning of this development. So you have, uh, backyards here. Uh, I think those are twenty-five foot deep. Then you have sixty-two foot wide landscape buffer, paving, and then another interior landscape buffer, if you will, here, and then the fuel island. I measured it out, and I think it's roughly two hundred, um, feet before you get from the elevation of a rear yard or a rear building or a rear back door to the first fuel island, the closest point of the fuel island. So you've got a lot of space in there. Plus, we're gonna fill this with vegetation, including some pretty tall pine trees as well. It'll have, you know, greenage throughout the year. I would remind you that we have a lot of trees in the right-of-way here. We're gonna save as many of those as we can. Anything that comes out has to be replaced on site. Some signage, a lot of, uh, wayfinding signs just for people as they access the, the lot. So those are the smaller signs. Would point your attention to the larger, um, sign here. This will be the, the sign that says Quick Star that you're all used to, the big sign. The other signs that you're seeing indicated are more just kind of wayfinding. This way to the car wash, you know, parking over here, um, diesel line, whatever. Um, so those are really just kind of minor. The big sign, the seventeen footer, is gonna be right here. That monument sign was originally nineteen feet. The developer has reduced it to seventeen feet, um, roughly seventeen six inches. So they've taken it down two feet. Uh, that's an, that's an improvement from our Planning and Zoning Commission that was recommended at that time. Um, so this slide is probably an update from what you've seen in, before tonight. Photometric plan. Again, some of these slides are really hard to read. I'm just gonna go cut to the chase and go right here. So they are reducing their off-light or off-site light to less than the one candlefoot standard, like way less, like point ten of a candlefoot. So they don't bleed light off their property more than point ten of a candlefoot. Hard to imagine what that is, but, um, this graphic, I think, does a good job of showing you where the, where it's lighted, obviously the lighter part. And then it becomes darker as you get off to or edge of the property. Now, that doesn't mean you won't see the lights, because if you're standing in a dark room looking to a light room, you're gonna see the light. But the amount of bleed over from that light into the next room or to the next property in this case, um, meets our code, is actually ninety percent less than our code. You should be familiar with these elevations. It looks a lot like a Quick Star. Uh, you've seen them before in our community. Um, and so here's what the building will look like. This is a little bit newer model. I think they're gonna have a little more, uh, interior seating and exterior seating, uh, than the other Quick Stars. They do a lot of food sales, a lot of kind of quick grab-and-go things. And here's that fuel island that we talked about a little bit. It doesn't show in this rendering, and the fuel island doesn't show that other berm that would be there, but of course, they've got the interior berm and the edge berm, if you will. We do recommend approval, uh, for the site development plan as presented. We did have unanimous support on August sixteenth at P and Z.
Any questions? Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, I had heard earlier a lot of people complaining, uh, about the lighting. And you just covered that a minute ago, but I just, I have also heard that Quick Star, uh, has changed their lighting to LED lights. Is that correct? To where it's not spreading out like it did?
That, it's almost standard. There, there's no one that's building incandescent lighting anymore. If you are, you're, you're wasting money. Um, so no one is bringing incandescent lights in anymore. Those are all LED lights. They bleed less. They point down.
Yep.
Um, so from a, from a light pollution standpoint, we feel pretty good about this site plan. I can't give you zero light pollution. I can't do that because people would be in the dark. But as far as meeting our code, again, they, they are meeting it by, um, leaps and bounds of what's required.
One more question. Is this a twenty-four-seven facility?
The operations to staff are determined by them. They were not conditioned at the Board of Adjustment.
She's shaking her head, yes.
Yeah, so we don't determine those as staff. Board of Adjustment could have limited them. They didn't. So I think if they combined people, they'd be open twenty-four hours, but it's hard to find enough workers right now.
Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, while the, uh, improvement around the signage is, is pretty good, reducing it two feet, I, I, I think what I would like to see out there as we look to, you know, further development with the, the, the single-family homes and the, and the townhomes that are nearby. Um, I, I'd like to see that be, be brought down to more of a monument style. Um, as we've seen on Middle Road with, uh, some of the new development that's going in, we're pushing, um, more towards those monument signs. Not that there's anything wrong. They are beautiful. You know, the signage is nice-looking, but I think in the, given the, the location, making that signage sort of less obtrusive or tall, um, might be, might be a better look for this location.
Yeah, thanks. I think the, the council can add conditions, if I'm not mistaken, uh, to the site plan, but I don't know, Chris, if that's possible.
Yeah, I guess I was, you know, typically that's a, a legislative, I guess I took Nick's comment to mean in the future, um, but perhaps I misunderstood, but certainly looking at the ordinance would be a legislative decision that the council could look at if you're going forward. Um, they've already, you know, I, is this, how, is this a monument sign?
This would be considered a monument sign. It's a seventeen-foot tall monument sign. I think the Alderman's saying he would, for a shorter sign that was monument style. I didn't understand if the question was, can I condition it today on this site plan, or, or do I want to see that brought forward in the future as a, as a text change, if you will, to code?
Yeah, I think, I think two separate issues, right? We're looking at this plan for tonight, but then I think in the future, there's three other corners still to be developed. So wanting to make sure that we don't set a precedent that these twenty-foot signs or seven feet, seventeen-feet signs are acceptable on all four of these points.
Yeah, typically, I would, I would say it's, if, if the sign meets code and it's actually shorter than what they could do under code already, they've reduced it to, if council feels that maybe it would make sense to, to look at the, the ordinance, um, for the future, that would be something that, that we could do, certainly. Um, that's well with, I mean, that's certainly something that you can look at and should look at if that's, um, an issue, but I would rather not do it here.
Sure.
Because they do meet code.
Other questions? Greg, then Bill?
When I was reviewing the packet, Mark, um, I thought I saw something mentioned about the roundabout, and it's not, it's not built correctly. Is there gonna be enough room? I thought I saw that, that was covered, but just to verify it. Is that, there gonna be enough room to fix that? This isn't gonna include-
Yeah, I think we, again, um, I'll ask Brent or Brian to jump in, but we have-
Brent, did you hear the question?
Roundabout, right-of-way.
There's plenty of right-of-way to accept, Aiden.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Bill?
Mr. Hunt, I notice on a couple of these site development plan graphics, they're showing concept buildings on lot two.
That's correct.
They have no purpose for this site development plan whatsoever.
They do not.
I would prefer that they be taken off of there, uh, subsequent to our approval.
Understood.
Mr. Play?
Your Honor, just a, a point of clarification. I believe the backyards, um, to the east of the new buffer area, when those backyards were constructed, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, there was an additional, I think, twenty-five or thirty feet added to the backyard as a requirement of the developer at that time.
Right.
So the, the backyards are larger
And burned.
and burned and treed twenty-five years ago when we made that requirement.
Right, so that's the extra twenty-five yards. I, maybe I wasn't clear in my presentation. So there's an extra twenty-five yards here.
Twenty-five feet.
Excuse me, twenty-five feet. Should've been metric. Uh, the twenty-five feet.
Football season's begun. You allow one or two.
And then sixty-two feet here.
Right.
And then another interior, I'm calling this a berm. It's, it's an interior landscaping element. So you have hundreds of feet.
That, that was conceived, for those of us that were here twenty-five years ago, and this was built in response to the landscaping issues we had at Devil's Glade, or Fifty-third and Eighteenth. We required the developer to put that in at that time for exactly this reason. So, um, there's roughly eighty feet of, of buffer between these properties. So just want to clarify that.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All right, this is marked as consent L. I'd like to entertain a motion that it remains so for tonight's consideration.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take that up as consent L. Let's take a look at the remaining consent agenda items. Is there any particular item any council member would like to ask questions about or discuss at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items on consent agenda for consent consideration tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take those up as consent. Any operational items anybody has a question about tonight? Not a very long agenda. Got a couple of, uh, first readings, a third reading, resolution. Things on operations. All right, any items to be added by council? I don't have any tonight. We're gonna have a little fun with, uh, a Optimus presentation to a Officer of the Year, so that's gonna be cool. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. We'll start right at seven o'clock. Thank you all.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Palczynski?
Here.
Before we do our pledge of allegiance and invocation, I'd like Val Orvat to give us away. Val's in the audience today. She is our new Library Board trustee. Thanks, Val, for agreeing to, uh, volunteer for us on the library board. She is on your consent agenda for approval this evening, so thanks again, Val. It was a pleasure having coffee with you and getting to know you a little better. Now, if you all could please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the pledge of allegiance. It will be followed by an invocation given by Pastor Ed Heading of Pleasant View Baptist Church. Please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor?
That's great. Only finally, we thank you for this great city. We thank you for the wonderful summer that we are enjoying, and it's coming to an end. We thank you for the Labor Day that reminds us of all the workers and all those who serve in this community. We just thank you for all the amenities that we enjoy here as well. And we just pray you'll be with, uh, all these leaders that are assembled here tonight. Give them collective wisdom. Help them to, uh, consider the constituents, their finances, and wisdom from you as they make their decisions. Help them through the good and the bad times to know that they can seek you, to know what to do next. Thank you for this opportunity. We just lift up these people tonight. We pray in your name. Amen.
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 All right, next on our agenda is a recommend, uh, excuse me, a recognition from the Optimus Club. And for that, we would like to invite Dave Phillips to the center of the room, and we'll let Dave talk to you a little bit about the award and provide the award honoring Officer Dylan Valdez.
I'm gonna try to stand on this white spot.
I don't like this. We're doing that for now. We will work out a fix. This isn't okay.
Okay. Yeah. One of, uh, Optimus International's stated purposes is to inspire respect for the law. And our club annually presents a plaque to, uh, to an officer of the department nominated by, uh, Chief Kimball. So it's our honor this year to, uh, present it to, uh, Dylan Valdez. Uh, if he could come forward.
Come on up, Dylan.
Come on up, Dylan.
Thank you, Mr.. I've got some comments to share about Officer Valdez's exemplary service. Officer Valdez has been with the Bettendorf Police Department for a little over three years, and during this short time, he has really come into his own as an officer. Officer Valdez is currently serving as a patrol officer on third shift and has taken additional responsibilities such as a field training officer, a member of the emergency response unit, and he recently completed sergeant candidate training to become an officer in charge. Officer Valdez comes to work each day with a positive attitude and work ethic. Officer Valdez leads by example as his positivity and dedication to his shift and fellow officers rubs off on others. His proactive approach on patrol has led him to making a significant arrest related to felons who were in possession of firearms, of which have led to federal prosecution where the defendant has received significant sentences, thus making our community safer. Officer Valdez is known for his professionalism, attention to detail, and quality of his work on cases that he has made arrests on or assisted with. Officer Valdez's competence makes the streets in our community safer and improves the lives of citizens of Bettendorf who he diligently protects. Thank you very much. I'm gonna present this plaque to you. Optimus International Law Enforcement Award, presented to Officer Dylan Valdez for distinguished and dedicated service advancing the respect for law objective of Optimus International, presented by the Bettendorf Optimists Club, program year twenty-two, twenty-three. Again, thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Get here for a couple photos. Let's come this way. Try to get out of that sconce. There you go.
Understand your family. Your parents are here?
Yeah.
Trying to get one up now. Go ahead, Dylan.
Just want to thank my parents for making the drive, about two and a half hours for mom, dad, and sister. And my daughter Juniper's here too, so that's pretty special. Thank you guys for all the support. My mom's here, so she's gonna be watching Juniper tonight, so I can go work tonight, so that's awesome. I'm thankful for that, and just the rest of the department and the city for all the support allowing us to do what we do.
So special to have you here tonight to take this in.
Thank you. It's a ranking trip.
Give him another round of applause.
Keith, don't go away. In recognition of all that you have contributed to our community over the years, how many years have you been?
A little over thirty-three years now. Or chief, chief is five, but thirty-three years.
Okay. Well, we also want to present you an award, a plaque for a law enforcement award. So I'm gonna call on Decker. He's gonna offer some comments.
After what you're receiving. After what you're receiving. Provide the comments and then I'll...
We won't go into any remedial training here. I better get over here. That's right. So Keith began his career as a patrolman in January of nineteen ninety. He became the school resource officer, which included being a dare instructor at the fifth-grade elementary level. And basically, he was one of our first school resource officers and kind of advanced that whole program. He was promoted sergeant in two thousand. As a sergeant, he served in the detective bureau, and then he was promoted to lieutenant, went back to third shift in the patrol division, was later transferred back to the administration division and served as our administrative and training bureau lieutenant, and then later served as detective lieutenant. He was promoted to captain in field services in twenty-twelve and was captain of that division until he was promoted to chief in May of twenty eighteen. He served on the emergency response unit for many years. He's been one of the department's armorers almost his whole career and still means that certification, which I'm grateful for, if you've ever seen me shoot. He's received, as I was looking through the jacket to try to get this, just tons of letters and commendations, citations for extraordinary service over his years of service. So Dave, back to you to present the award to the chief who can barely keep a job.
Chief Kimball, the wording is the same as what was on Officer Valdez's plaque. Presented to Chief Keith Kimball for distinguished and dedicated service advancing the respect for law objective of Optimus International by the Bettendorf Optimists Club. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We tried to keep this a secret.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Did you know anything about it?
I did not.
Splendid. Heck of a detective.
So this was a surprise. This is not, this really is not about me tonight. It's about all the people standing back there and the rest of the department, because that's what I do what I do for. I mean, that's the only reason I serve as chief. I get emotional, but this is, like I said, this is about Dylan. This is about all the quality. We have such a great department. We have been able to recruit great people. We have great veteran officers. We have young officers. We have a quite variety. It's just a testament to the city, to the city council, the mayor, Decker, everything, and all the department heads. Just the support we get. So thank you.
Well, again, congratulations, Officer Valdez. Job well done. We appreciate you. And Chief Kimball, thank you, sir, for all of your service. We move to public requests of council. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, and we do have one about the family museum. Other than that, if you'd like to be heard on an issue, now is your time. You can approach the podium in the back. Please state your name and your address. Before speaking, we'd like to hear from you. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Try not to be repetitive and refrain from outbursts like clapping or yelling. Go right ahead, sir. Name an address.
Larry Campbell, fifteen oh two Cherry Hills Road, Bettendorf. I had some notes, but I just found out a minute ago, and they have two minutes, so I'm just gonna hit on the rental houses in our area. For the past five years, we had a nightmare situation behind us of a rental. The code department was up there probably a dozen times a year, and that's, you can ask Angela, that's not an exaggeration. The chief of police was actually up there. The guy was running a chop shop. Couldn't get him to stop. Went to the owner of the house. He didn't care. So where I'm going here is we do not have a list of rental homes in Bettendorf, and we don't have control over the people that rent them. So if there's a situation, the owners that I've seen have basically just shrugged it off, like this one the past five years. Now, it has been bought by a larger corporation, and they are gonna still run it out. My main concern is, I live in an area where I can count out my front and back window about eight different rental units now, and there's no control whatsoever over them. My daughter works, my daughter-in-law works in Davenport for a large corporation. They know everybody in every apartment. We have no idea who these people are in these houses. They come and go. There's at least a daycare going across the street. There's different, ten different cars there all the time. So we have no idea. So what I'm asking here tonight is, you know, is there some way we can get some kind of a handle on the rental homes in Bettendorf, who owns them and who's going into them? That's my two minutes going.
Oh, you're fine.
So this is not only a concern for the noise, and it looked like a garbage dump back there. Scott was there. Should I say Mr. Newman in here? So he knows. And again, the chief of police was there, and they couldn't do anything. So we have all these owners that have no controls placed on them. They don't have licenses. The other thing is, they pay the same taxes as we do, and they're running businesses. So right there, you know, if we went after those two things, it would pay to have these lists and controls put in place, in my opinion. So that's all I have on that part, so I'll stop there because I'd go a lot longer if I go into the others.
Larry, we appreciate your comments, and it's been something that council continues to struggle with. And there are certain laws that restrict some of the things we can and can't do. But we bring this up and talk about it each year at our goal setting. We've got a planned goal setting in early October. We'll report back to the community if there are other controls we can put in place and there are other things that we can do.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Is there a way I could receive a notice at that meeting?
Yeah, that meeting will be noticed through all general channels. You can check our website. It's already set, and I don't know which, it's the first weekend in October, I think.
For thirteenth.
October thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth? There you go. Three days, October thirteenth, the Friday, fourteenth, the Saturday, and fifteenth, the Sunday. We usually start at four o'clock Friday. That would be the thirteenth.
That would be the, yes.
Okay.
And that would be here?
Correct, the same room.
All right.
There'll be lots of other things for us to talk about. You are welcome to be there the whole time. I don't know when it'll come up, but it'll be on the agenda for us to discuss.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Your Honor, just as a point of reference, we did, the code enforcement responded a number of times to this residence. We did arrest the gentleman on a number of occasions. He's no longer a resident there, as I understand it. So we did have quite a bit of interaction on this particular property and got some resolution, but it took quite a bit of time for it to happen. So we wanted to make sure that Larry's comments were put in a frame of reference, at least as it relates to that property and that individual.
And I apologize. I have no issues with the city at all. I mean, they...
I didn't hear that, Larry. I think you did great.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We want to continue to work with you. We hear you.
I'll see you in October.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard on public requests of council? All right, let's close public requests of council and move towards our public hearing for the family museum roof replacement project. What department head's gonna inform us on that? Mr. Schmidt, our director of public works. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. The existing roof on the family museum is the original roof. It's over twenty-eight and a half years old. Over the past several years, we've received several complaints from the existing director over there and commenting about the leaky conditions. We have heard her. This is a project that is funded in the current CIP that we discussed at the last budget meeting. So we plan to have the bids in within the next week, and then we'll pick a contractor and hopefully get this constructed before the end of the year.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Brian or for Jillian? No, for Kim. Kim. Oh, it's a family museum. We're already talking about the library. You're on a learning campus. I'm allowed of confusion.
Right next door.
Yeah. Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to replacing the roof at the museum. Now Jillian wants a roof.
Years ago.
Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Councilmember Brown, would you please help me with a resolution?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the Bettendorf Family Museum Roof Replacement Project and move approval of this resolution.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion here from council as part of our information packet for goal setting, for budget? All right, seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexter?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved that resolution, and we'll get some bids and create a roof. We move to an ordinance. This is a first reading. Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section Six dash one dash three-two-two, parenthetical A, parenthetical two, entitled Vehicles Entering Stop or Yield Intersection by adding a stop intersection on Greenfield Road at Olive View Drive. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any discussion here? Ordinance again, three readings for those at home. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexter?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved the first reading of that ordinance on a stop sign at Greenfield at Olive View. We'll have that come before us two more times. Speaking of stop signs and yields, Councilmember Palczynski, am I saying it right with a Chinsky? I've been saying, okay, well, welcome aboard, Mr. Palczynski.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Sorry for my mispronunciation. Next time, you should just, you know, wring my neck and tell me about it. Or I'll race one of your kids and blow out the other one.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section Six dash one dash three-two-two, parenthetical A, parenthetical two, entitled Vehicles Entering Stop or Yield Intersection by adding a yield intersection on East Kensington Circle, North Richmond Circle at Wyndham Drive. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. Any discussion here? All right, seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexter?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
That first reading has also been unanimously approved, and we move to a third reading. Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section Six dash one dash one thirty-one, because I can't say parenthetical, entitled No Parking Zones Enumerated by Modifying a No Parking Zone on Thirty-Ninth Street. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Any discussion here, having been passed three times? Michelle, would you please call the roll? Third and final reading.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexter?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
That has also unanimously passed. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our entire consent agenda this evening. So moved. Second. Any discussion on any particular item from any council member this evening? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexter?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed each and every item on tonight's consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to... Your Honor. Oh, yes. Would we like some additional businesses this evening? Councilmember Sexter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to give a gold star award to Brian Schmidt and Jason Manfield for their work that they're doing down on Meyer Park in the first ward. I've received several comments from neighbors and users of that park that they appreciate the work you're doing down there. Thank you. Your Honor, thank you. Just a personal note to Chief Knorick. Just been an honor working with you, and I remember the day that there was a fire at that four-plex on Sutton Place that, you know, just you were in the trenches. You're a true firefighter. So just grateful for all you've done and your leadership as well as, you know, in the trenches.
You're here. Anything else for the other order this evening? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for your comments. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. We stand adjourned. Good job.